Okay. This meeting is called to water. This is the April 24th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. As we have for the past couple of meetings, we're conducting our meeting remotely because of the COVID-19 virus. To start off, I just have to go through some preliminary, so bear with me. It's two and a half pages long. So as a preliminary matter, this is Marist Apollo, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So members, when I call your name, please respond, "Present." Beth Cassavant?
Present.
Mr. LeBeau?
Affirmative.
Mr. Kane?
Present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Samia?
Present.
Okay, staff, would you do the same when I call your name? Mr. Mizikah?
Present.
Jeff Holland?
Present.
Valerie Clemmie?
Present.
Okay, any speakers who are anticipate, who are expected to talk during the, during the meeting, when I call your name, please say, "Present." Victor D. Oliveria?
Present. I'm his business partner. I'll be representing him.
Okay, who's this?
My name's Anna Carolina.
Okay. Are you part of the business, just so we know who you are?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you have a phone line also? I'm getting some feedback.
Yeah.
Okay, just bear with me, we'll tell you how it's gonna work. Richard Ricker, are you here?
I am.
Right. Alright, so good evening, everyone. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 20th, I mean March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate transmission of the virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings and at, uh, public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of, of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. My bird clock just went off. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, excuse me, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment during our public hearing segment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Hangouts as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. It's also being broadcast and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to share screen on your computer unless asked by the chairman or the staff, or the staff person. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. The meeting's gonna be conducted as follows. We'll be turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, I will cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first, then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide comment or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then a second. Please hold until your name is called. Again, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by our speaking and background noise. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance that are expected to present, please hold until your name is called to present. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking and remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by our speaking or background noise. Again, please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. After your presentation, members of the board will be given the opportunity to ask questions. After the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair have a full list of public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford each three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Okay, we got through that. So now we'll move into the regular portion of the agenda. First, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Need to roll call?
Right, I was moving to that. Ms. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next motion is to approve the minutes of March 10th, 2020, March 24th, 2020, and April 7th, 2020. Does anybody have any comments, would like to make a motion?
I think motion to approve the minutes of March 10th, March 24th, and April 7th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Is there any other comment? Okay, there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Okay, does anybody have any announcements or reports this evening? Ms. Cassavian?
Yes, I just wanted to mention and remind residents that we have suspended the pink bag recycling of textile collection that the company Simple Recycling has decided to suspend operations across the state. I've seen some pink bags out. We've gotten a few questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Have any announcements? Okay. Mr. Mizikah, do you have anything you'd like to report this evening?
I do, Mr. Chairman, and if you don't mind, I will provide both reports for items four and five.
Okay, yep, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the Town Manager's Report, I just wanted to pick up where Selectmen LeBeau had mentioned at the last meeting that census responses are out there and they're currently in the self-response period. So if you have received something in the mail or go to census.gov, you're able to respond to the 2020 census, which is critical at this time. I will note to date, the town is at 59.9% response rate, which sounds like a good number, but we're lagging behind surrounding communities such as South Borough, who is at 68%, North Borough, 67%, and Grafton at 62%. So I just encourage residents to please complete their census as soon as possible and make sure that you're counted and that the town is eligible for all the financial resources that we would based upon population. And I thank you for the, the time that it will take to fill that out, which is not long, because I recently did mine. So please do that. Just wanted to also acknowledge Department of Public Works employees, Selco, other staff members for all their work yesterday dealing with the storm. There was a number of trees down and power outages related to the storm and obviously we're on alternate staffing schedules, but everyone that we called upon certainly worked hard to get the power back up and get the roads cleared, and I want to thank them for those efforts in those tough conditions yesterday. Moving on to the COVID-19 report, as of today, there are 95 positive cases of COVID-19 within the town of Shrewsbury within the last, with the last seven days of 36 positive cases averaging 5.2 per day. So there's no significant increase or decrease over the previous seven days. I ask all community members to continue to be vigilant and avoid any unnecessary travel. Continued thanks to our public health team, frontline public safety personnel and first responder, responders. They, along with medical professionals, grocery store workers, pharmacists, and other essential workers continue to serve valiantly in the face of this pandemic. I also just wanted to take a moment to recognize the efforts of so many other town staff members. After all, the town, we are an organization whose sole purpose is to serve the public, the residents of Shrewsbury, and the taxpayers of Shrewsbury. There isn't one aspect of the organization that hasn't been impacted, from teachers streaming knowledge to the adept financial team managing things remotely but still keeping content safe and secure, to innovative ways that our team is complying with other public-facing requirements like bid openings. I just wanted to say thank you to all of our employees who continue to be very innovative and responsive during these times. With regards to personal protective equipment, I'd like to report to the Board of Selectmen that we are in a comfortable and stable position for all facets of town operations. And we're only in this position because of extremely generous donations from residents and an allocation that we recently received from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. I look forward to working with the board to formally recognize all the persons that have donated to the town during this time at an appropriate time in the future. We are focusing on financial planning and revisions to both the FY '20 and '21 budgets where needed. Economic advisors are still stressing that the, the duration of the virus will determine the ultimate financial impacts. What is clearly known is that returning to business as usual too soon will have much more of a significant impact than that of a more cautious approach. Town buildings do remain closed to the public, and we will continue to work with state officials to determine the best time in reconsidering that position. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board.
Sorry, so you melded four and five together, so you're finished? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we now have 7:05, a continued public hearing with Victor D. Oliveria, owner of Icar Auto, Icar Auto, Inc., 306 Boston Turnpike for a Class II license. Ms. Carolina, you are going to be participating on behalf of Icar?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have an application here for a used car license at that location. Could you explain what you're gonna be doing at the business? Obviously selling used cars, but also what's happening with the garage business?
Yes, so we've been serving the Shrewsbury community with all the general auto repair service since 2014. Now, we're looking to improve our income source, and that's the reason why we also decided to apply for the license. We're gonna keep working with the general auto repair service, and then we just want to have an additional income source and also, you know, I think we're gonna improve the service for our customers as well.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear, you're asking to be able to, to show 22 cars on the property?
We are not sure how many cars we allow to. We don't want to sell a lot of cars. So between 10 to 20, I think it should be a good amount, if you consider that, you know, a fair option.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm gonna have several questions related to the site, but before I do that, does anybody else have any questions that they'd like to ask? No one yet?
Mr. Chairman, I do. I have a question.
Mr. Samia?
So just a quick question on the survey. So there's a total of 26 spaces there. Is that anticipated? My question is this. I was there this afternoon because I had to visualize this, and then back there are currently nine spaces. They're pretty snug in there now. At the furthest end towards Gordon Road, there's a flat bed. I'm not sure exactly how 11 cars would fit in there, so I guess my question is what kind of cars? And I know that a couple of these spaces are also, one is a handicap spot that one of these spaces is covering, so I didn't know where the handicap space was going. And I guess the related question in front is, is there enough, is there enough space in front? Because even a Honda Pilot seems to come really snug to the sidewalk. So I guess the question is there nine spots? And first question is, there are nine spots and back now the cars are really snug. How would we get 11 cars back?
Yeah, so that, that was actually the reason why. The two handicap spots are actually in the front of the building. We do have the other 11 spaces in the back of the, of the parking lot, which is where we actually looking to keep the cars they were going to be selling. And based on the plan provided by the engineer that, you know, the, the amount of space, we're trying to only sell compact cars. So I think it should be enough space based on what we went over with the engineer. But we, we are not looking necessarily to have a lot of volume in the car, you know, of selling cars. All we want is to increase our income source. So let's say if you're thinking that 11 cars will be, that we can accommodate 11 cars, we can, you know, drop the number down to five, to eight. But we do have the handicap spaces in the front, and we are only looking to sell the, the small compact cars.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Samia, does that answer your question for now?
Yeah, it answers that. I mean, the, the issue I have in front, I, I guess if it's compact cars, I still have a hard time figuring how there are gonna be 11 cars there. And plus, there are garage doors that these spaces are in front of, and I'm not sure how cars would get in and out, but that answers for the most part right now.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions at the moment? Okay, Ms. Carolina, I'm gonna follow up on Mr. Samia's questions about the parking. I understand that you had a registered land surveyor lay out the, the site. But unless there's a variance that we're not aware of, none of these spaces as they are laid out, except for the four that are directly in back of the building, are actually legal spaces under zoning. Zoning requires a nine-by-19 space, 19-foot space. These spaces are seven-by-18. So I don't know where you got those numbers, but unless you get a variance from the, the zoning board, and that will be up to them. And you are gonna have to go to the zoning, zoning board for your special permit. Those spaces are, are most likely, the count is not gonna be allowed. You'll be able to have spaces, but not that many. The other issue is, is Mr. Mr. Samia said, this plan doesn't show where the doors are on the plan, but parking right up to the building. So you're obviously in the front for sure. You're gonna lose some spaces. The same in the back. You're gonna lose at least one because you need to be able to get in and out of the building.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I understand. Mm-hmm.
Okay, just so you're aware. And I would also caution you that the way those spaces are laid out in the front of the building, if you're gonna have those, if they're allowed by the zoning board, you should think about having them face the other direction because you're on the eastbound lane of, of Route 9. And those spaces are oriented as if somebody was going west. So it's gonna be very difficult to make a turn into those spaces. So just so you're aware, I'm sure the zoning board's going to address it. And are you aware that you have on your garage license, you, you have the ability to store nine cars that are being prepared out back? So you've got to, we can play around with, if we decide to vote for this, how many spaces we're gonna allow for the car, the cars to sale, but you can't use the same space for two things, basically. So are you aware of that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So let, let me ask you then, did you lay out, not you, but did you have the, the surveyor or the engineer lay out the plan to show what the maximum number of cars you could potentially, could potentially park on the site?
You made it up from previous or from the one you have?
Yeah.
Because based on what I see here, the only layout we have is the one that, that was drawn and sent it over to you with the 11 spaces. I wasn't even aware that we needed to have, you know, a certain amount of space, which I think you mentioned is nine-by-19. I'll definitely go over that with the person who, who made the drawings for us, and I apologize for that.
Okay. And then the hours of operation are going to be, proposing to be closed on Sunday, eight to seven Monday through Friday, and eight to four on Saturday. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? No one? Okay. So, Ms. Caroline, do you have anything that you want to add before I ask for a motion? I actually have a comment, but do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else who, I guess isn't in the audience, but is online, who would have any comments that they'd like to make? Okay, hearing no one, seeing no one on the screen. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. I just go straight to the roll call. Ms. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, the hearing's closed. What is the pleasure of the board? Any ideas on, if you'd like to approve the license with conditions, without conditions? Certainly, this is gonna be subject to a determination by the, by the Zoning Board of Appeals. But is there anything that you would like to note?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to note our concerns with the size of the parking spaces, and I'd also like to have a firm number of cars or a range of cars that we're going to be comfortable with having on the lot. You mentioned the nine in the previous license, and they're talking about another number of vehicles. I think we need to, I would like to see a range set that we're comfortable with.
Okay. Because of the unique circumstances, Ms. Carolina, how many cars do you store overnight that are out for, that are waiting to be repaired?
Around eight to nine cars at night.
Eight to nine cars outside?
No, I'm sorry, sir. I thought it was inside. Outside, let me, let me just double.
I'm sorry, you're not, you didn't come through clearly to me.
We don't usually have a certain numbers of cars that we put outside because once we close the shop, we put all the cars inside. But usually, we fit around six cars in front of the building across the door, and then there's space for another two cars right next to where the big door is. So around seven to nine cars.
Seven to nine cars in the building?
Outside of the building.
Okay. And they're all in the back?
That is correct, because, so across the garage door, there is nothing, right? So we fit at least seven cars there, and then we have the big door, and then on the right side, we can fit another three cars vertical going to across Route 9. So we can, we definitely have space for, between seven to nine cars in the back of the building plus the extra space that we have in the front of the parking lot, not counting the two handicap ones. So that leaves us with, you know, nine to seven cars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For, for any comments on, on that? Okay, what, what it sounds like I just heard was that most of the spaces in the back could be taken up by cars that are waiting to be repaired. So I don't know, I don't know how we make this work unless we severely limit the number of cars that are gonna be allowed for sale.
The cars that we do the repairs, we leave them inside. We don't usually leave any cars that are having repaired on outside. So anything that we're working on, we keep them inside the garage. So all the space that we have outside will be for the cars that we're leaning to sell.
Okay, so I guess I misunderstood. There's no outside storage to be during the day, I mean, at night, waiting to be repaired the next day?
Yeah, we don't usually keep them here. So the only cars that we do the repairs, we always keep them inside. We don't leave any cars that we, you know, were doing repairing even during the day outside, no.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, the customer drops out a car, we work on the repair, and then, you know, we only take another car after we, we run down with the, we don't want that we're doing the repair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so board members, comments, questions, thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm a little confused because when I was there about an hour ago, there were seven cars out back. So I'm, I'm not sure how those seven cars would fit in the garage. So I'm still trying to figure out what the permit that's in place for the nine vehicles for repair and whether all those nine can fit in the building, but there's still, I'm still a little stuck at that, that if those vehicles go in or not, there's still a permit covering nine spots. That are used at least during the day.
Ms. Caroline, please wait. I'll, I'll ask you for comment after Mr. Samia is done, okay?
So, so I guess to clarify the question is I'm confused a little bit because during the day, those cars will still be out back. So I don't know how you'd put used vehicles for sale at night, but during the day, those spots are gonna be covered presumably by cars being repaired. So that's what I'm a little confused about, how those nine spots would be available all the time for those used vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Before, before we move on, I think we've got a lot of questions. We think it would be appropriate to ask the board for a motion to reopen this hearing so we can have discussion because we shouldn't be going too far beyond discussion with the applicant after we, we've closed the hearing. So it might be a good idea to reopen the hearing. Somebody like to make a motion?
Motion to reopen the hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Roll call vote. Ms. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
And Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, so, Ms. Carolina, could you, could you try to explain what is happening with parking the cars? Because we're, we're obviously confused. we're we're obviously confused?
Uh huh. Yes. So we had the cars outside this morning, I mean, this afternoon, because we were um, actually cleaning the shop today. Um, as we don't have a lot of things going on right now due to the COVID nineteen, that was the reason why we kept the cars outside. However, once we get approved for the license to sell the cars, we are not gonna be having any cars outside that space. Um, that's that's what we're looking at right now.
Okay, well, let me just follow up. But during the day, if you can only fit six or seven cars in the building um, to work on them, you don't have any cars stored outside that are waiting to go into the garage or how how do you do that?
Uh huh. Most majority of the time, we still have space inside to 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 have the repairs done, like I mentioned. Uh, but usually I would say that if we have to keep a car outside, it will be one or two, no more than that. Because if you come to the store inside, we have four lifts. And um, you know, we have another space that fits another car. So we always keep about five cars here inside, and we only have two mechanics. So we can't have space for many cars anyway, uh, for repair.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, usually we schedule the appointment, you know, so forth on.
Okay, um, so board members, any questions for clarification on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kane?
I don't want to seem curt, but frankly, nothing makes sense in this. Um, I didn't have a chance to stop by as our colleague did, Mr. Samia, but I drove by. And and it's just not holding together from a standpoint of intuitively making sense. So I don't know whether we should ask, have a motion to table and allow the applicant to submit clarifying information. But it it simply appears to me that it's just not holding together and making any sense whatsoever.
Okay. Whoops, thank you. Um, anybody else? Any other board members? I'm sorry, was that you, Mr. Lebov?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I I I note that in the uh two thousand and fourteen zoning board of appeals decision, they were limited to nine cars, nine vehicles in the back for overnight outdoor parking. And that was the entire restriction.
As far as parking, you mean?
Correct. It was nine spaces, not eleven. Actually, I did a quick math project while you had mentioned what the appropriate size was. There does seem to be sufficient square footage in the back to accommodate nine vehicles. Um, and I do know, as I mentioned, I note that in the two thousand and fourteen DBA hearing decision, there were, there were a variety of conditions, but that was the only one relative to overnight outdoor parking.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else? No one else right now? Um, I I I agree with Mr. Kane's comments. Um, maybe the most appropriate thing to do at this point is continue this until the twenty eighth and give the applicant uh, time to um, clarify to our satisfaction uh, this question on storage and and perhaps um um, I or somebody staff could have a conversation um, with the applicant during the week to just work, work through the information to make sure that we understand it because I I agree. I think it's very confusing. Um, I I kind of think I understand what um, what they're doing, but I think we need to be sure before we get ourselves into uh, a problem. So um, what what is the rest of the board think? Am I getting a yes or no?
I I agree. I think it'd be better to have clarification because it is confusing.
I also agree.
Okay, then, um, I I entertain a motion to adjourn this hearing until the April twenty eighth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mr. Lebov?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. DePaulo, aye. So Ms. Carolina, um, we're gonna, we're gonna continue this hearing until the twenty eighth and give you some time to um, get some clarification on the storage questions. Um, and we'll have you come back. We'll get you the, why don't we put it down for uh Val, can we put it down for seven oh five, seven fifteen?
Yes, that works for me.
Okay, Valerie? You got the, you got the calendar, right?
Yep, uh, we can put that on for seven oh five. I just want to remind the board that we have to vote to close the hearing as well.
We have a what?
Vote to close the hearing.
Vote to close the hearing? No, I'm not catching you.
Yes.
You mean tonight? No, we had, we had a motion.
The board needs to vote.
I'm sorry, say it again.
No, never mind.
Okay, just so we're clear, so we don't make a mistake, we voted to reopen the hearing. And then we just had a motion and a vote to adjourn it till next, till the twenty eighth. Is that correct?
Okay. Okay, yep, got it. Thank you.
Whoops, okay, thanks. Okay, um, then let's uh, move on to our next uh hearing, a continued public hearing um with Keith Lindham, proposed manager of eighty-one Quinton Pub LLC. I I believe that our action tonight is to continue this because of the restrictions on being able to work during this uh the the virus crisis is is limiting their ability to get stuff done. So um, can I have a motion to continue this hearing until um, April twenty eighth at seven ten?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in the second. Mrs. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mr. Lebov?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
And Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay. Uh, my next order of business is a meeting with um Jeff Holland, the DPW director, to remove, uh, remove, to review the pavement rehabilitation plan for FY twenty one to twenty four. Uh, Mr. Holland, are you here? Jeff?
I am. I unmute myself first.
Okay, um, then, uh, so do you want to review the the plan?
Sure. So similar to like we did last year, uh, we have prepared a four-year uh, pavement rehab plan. Uh, for for this would be FY twenty one through FY twenty four, where FY twenty one is projects that are currently out to bid now, in which in which we already have the chapter ninety money for them. The roadways that we looked at in order to prepare this report was based upon the two thousand and fifteen dash sixteen uh, pavement management uh, report that was done by Beta uh, in which we have started trying to remove most of our worst roads in terms of their condition uh, that would, that was back in in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, so where last year, when we did the this report, we had seven roads that were listed on the uh, for FY twenty. Unfortunately, three of those roads took ninety percent of the available funds, and that was Lake Street um, from Grafton Street to Route nine, South Street from Route twenty to Brook Street, and Francis Ave from Main Street to Patton Ave, Patton Road. Uh, we originally had Longfellow, Flanagan, um, Westport Circle and Jill Circle on last year. But we did, we did not have significant funds to complete those four additional streets. Uh, we we initially were going to try to put a smaller contract out toward the end of the year. But with the weather conditions that came in, and it would have been a fairly small contract, we elected to carry over those chapter ninety funds to put out a much larger contract this year. Uh, so we have included those four streets, Flanagan, Longfellow, Westport and Jill Circle. And then we added uh, Deer Grass, Dolphin, Brightside Place, Dana Road, Tory Lane and Tory Drive. And the currently on our worst-conditioned road is Tory Lane. It fall closely by Hillside Drive, but Hillside Drive, we will look to do in FY twenty two as we are extending the sewer from the high school, from the New Beale School onto Hillside Drive. Uh, so therefore, we will wait a year and do that next year. As as I said, we currently have the funds in place for FY twenty one. And those uh, project is out to bid now in anticipation of getting bids back in, I believe it's uh, April twenty fourth, which is next week. In hoping that we can be early in the paving list this year, where last year we put it out a little late. Where this year, we're trying to get it in early and hopefully up, the prices will come in lower uh, than they did last year. Though last year's uh, roads that we did were a complete reconstruct, they were, this year, we're doing just milling and overlaying. Uh, now, each of the streets that we're doing also includes some catch basin replacements, which we will fund out of the stormwater utility and uh, handicap curb ramp replacements, uh, which we are required to do under uh the Mass AAB and Federal Highway, Federal Highway Administration requirements. Mo- most of our handicap ramps we have on these streets are non-compliant, they're bituminous or they don't meet the requirements. Uh, it Mass AAB requires them to be concrete with the uh detection warning pads, which we will be putting on. Uh, so we are estimating that this total amount will be somewhere around nine hundred to one point, one million, nine hundred thousand and one million dollars. We are putting it out a base bid with a couple of alternates. So if the numbers do come in higher than we anticipate, then we have an option, and these roads will then obviously get moved down to the following year. If at the end, when the when the bids come in and we find that we actually have additional funds, we will add additional streets to this list. Now, I do have a map, if I can do this correctly. Can you see that?
Yes, Jeff, we can.
Excellent, wow. Uh, so I did, I did a a map showing uh the uh streets that we have done since two thousand and sixteen, which are in green, two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty. And then I've also added in the streets that we had proposed for FY twenty one, twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. Now, wh- when we, while we're going through through the our our plan to, of which streets to repair, we look at several factors. One, we try to be equitable across the town in which we're not, we don't want to limit most of, say, all of our streets in, say, Precinct one, in this case, that's really shown. Uh, we tried to spread them out over the whole town. So I will say, however, of the fifty lowest-rated streets on the on our, in our town are primarily in Precinct one. Uh, I would, I'd say thirty-five out of our top fifty worst streets uh, are are in Precinct one, probably because those were all constructed about the nineteen eighties, early nineties. Uh, but as you can see in FY twenty one, I have, we're doing three roads in Precinct one. Then I go move down this two in Precinct six, granted they're short, one in Precinct eight, actually two more in Precinct one. And then we have one in Precinct four. And again, we're trying to spread it out across the town. Historically, there hasn't been a significant number in Precinct nine, mainly because most of those roads are newer than some of the other places in town. Uh, year two, we plan on doing more in Precinct ten, Precinct four, Precinct five. And if you get a chance to drive some of these, especially in the spring, if you go out to Hillside now, uh, it is a lot of undulations in in the pavement. It's not so much that it's broken, breaking up, it's just that it's in uh, poor, very poor condition. Um, we did have a discussion with the water department on some of these streets. Uh, Boylston Street, Ruth Van Ave, Alice Drive and um uh, Roman Drive are on the uh water department's comprehensive water audit of those uh, streets need to have their water main replaced. So we will replace those water mains at least a year prior to uh, the proposed uh, repaving. Uh, Boylston Circle right now is being in Precinct one is being the second phase of the drainage improvements is being done now. And then we will do the water main replacement in Boylston Circle and then replace uh, repave, and that will be a full-depth replacement similar to what we did on Lake Street. Uh, when that would be in FY twenty three. Uh, obviously, as we go out on these outlier years, twenty-three, twenty-four, these uh, roads will change more than likely from year to year as we, A, as the costs come in at a different at a different, um, at a higher rate or higher cost, which we're hoping they don't. We've estimated a five percent increase per year of construction costs. Uh, so we're trying to, again, do it throughout the town, but we're also trying to lower our RSR number, which is our 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 uh, road, let's see. The RSR, I always forget. It's basically our rating of our roads. Oh, it's our road surface rating. Uh, and so we're trying to take the lowest ones off the list well, as to to hopefully raise our RSR up to a respectable level. Um, I don't want to dwell on the previous letter that I had sent dated March sixteenth, but even with the three roads that we had repaired and the complete reconstruction of Main Street, uh, our RSR number actually dropped by two points from seventy-six point four down to seventy-four point five. Uh, even though we spent even the nine hundred thousand on chapter ninety money and the five point six, I believe it was, for the Main Street reconstruction. Um, now, none of the roads that we are proposing to to do repave includes any sidewalks um, at this point. Last year, as part of the construction of Lake Street, we did replace the sidewalk in Lake Street, and we did replace the sidewalk in Francis Ave from the senior housing out toward Main Street. But this particular year, we are not proposing to do sidewalks as part of the the reconstruction of the road. As these are milling overlay and then just handicap ramps and some drainage improvements. The reason we are doing the drainage improvements, we're not adding structures, we are replacing the existing catch basins that currently do not meet our our EPA stormwater permit that requires each of the catch bases to have a four-foot sump. Um, so we, uh, and I believe I just, for instance, Longfellow has, I think, thirty-six catch basins that have to be replaced. Uh, we originally were gonna put that out as a separate contract. Uh, but we felt that having one contract do both. And we had talked to several paving contractors and they would prefer to do it that way, that because if we have one and one contractor is delayed, we don't want to delay the paving project. Again, we will fund it out of the stormwater, but it will be done by the city, by the paving contractor. Uh, we are doing uh, the bidding, even though we are, town hall is closed, we are doing bidding. Uh, we had a, the contractor can drive each of the streets, and then we'll have the bid opening, I believe it's on the twenty-fourth of April. And we'll read the bids outside, hopefully it's a nice day. And which we typically, we either meet in the old selectmen's meeting room, in this case And which we typically, we either meet in the old selectmen's meeting room. In this case, we'll just read the bids outside and everybody can uh, uh, hopefully we'll get good numbers. All right. All right, now. Okay, uh, is there any questions that I can answer?
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, um, I, I have, I have one. Um, Jeff, when did, when did you say the pavement? Management system that, that evaluation that Beta did, that was, that was the last and only one, right? Comprehensive one?
The last one we had done is correct. That was in two thousand fifteen. It's dated two thousand sixteen. Uh, so we are due to have another one done.
Do we, do we have that in any type of schedule in the capital plan?
Uh, we, we do have it, not necessarily in a capital, but we have been discussing it and looking at different options. Uh, we have had several companies come in and give us presentations, uh, so that we can look at costs. Um, we've had. A- and there's different options now. There's di- we've had. Companies that come in to do drive-by. They actually tab a vehicle that takes pictures the, every so often along the route and actually takes pictures. But then we, which may also dovetail onto, they can locate all of our structures that are in the streets at the same time. So we've had them come in. We've had other, similarly to how Beta did it, which is a different type of drive-through. Or drive-by. So we've had, I think, two or three different uh, vendors come in. And give us prices on the cost. Some of them we think are too uh, elaborate and others we don't think is, is um, comprehensive enough. So we're kind of weighing our options and trying to see if we can piggyback that with our uh, new GIS system that we're looking at.
Oh, okay, great. Um, you know, we still have our old computer system. Um, John Knight has all of this stuff committed to memory, so. Um, if you ever need to call him, I still see him bribing around town. I think he's still checking streets, but. In any event, um, okay, thank you very much. Is there any other questions from anybody?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Casavia.
Uh, Mr. Holland, will the um, pandemic, the COVID nineteen, will that have any impact on the funding that we get in chapter ninety? And the ability to complete the projects that you outlined in your presentation?
Uh, for FY twenty-one, we already have the funds in hand. Obviously, any outlier years FY twenty-two in, or. F, yeah, FY twenty-two, so technically, in the past, what we have done is we have not spent FY twenty-one. Or say FY twenty-one, we would, or FY twenty, we would wait till we get the money in FY twenty-one to do the FY, or to do the summer of twenty work. In this case, we are, we have the funds in hand, so we're actually usually a year behind. We ha- or a year ahead, so to speak, with the funding. So we have the money in hand currently for this year, this summer's projects. What we don't have, we don't know for next year, how, what that will be. Uh, we were hoping mo- every DPW is hoping for additional funding above the two hundred million, which the state gives out in chapter ninety money. Obviously, with the COVID nineteen and the budget constraints the state's gonna have, we don't, we're hoping that remains at two hundred million. In this year, with the supplemental budget that came out earlier, the three hundred million was given to the municipalities. Or was proposed and, and we, therefore, we got the additional almost a hundred, that hundred thousand dollars worth of uh, chapter ninety money. So this year, yeah, this year we, there's funding. Next year, obviously, I don't know.
And just as a follow-up, the only funding that is used to do these types of projects comes from the chapter ninety money. It's not money that we're putting in out of our own appropriations.
That is correct, except for we are now going to be funding the drainage improvements, the, out of the stormwater utility. Which we had, that's what we had used, had put money in the uh, stormwater utility for drainage improvements and that's what it's, we will be using it for.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, um, Mr. Holland, thank you um, for that um, presentation. Um, I, I appreciate the mapping. It really helps um, helps you figure out what's gonna go on in which year. So um, thank you for putting that together.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. LeBeau.
May I interrupt you? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we neglected a announcement that uh, Angela Snell asked us to make on the number three.
Okay.
So I don't know, I don't have it right in front of me, but I noticed, I don't, I don't believe we did that and I just wanted to call it to your attention.
I have it if you want me to read it.
Sure, why don't you, go, go for it.
Uh, it says, please remember to practice social distancing when visiting the town's parks and open space areas. Playgrounds, basketball and tennis courts remain closed. Sports practices are also canceled at this time. The Parks Department and Animal Control would also like to remind residents that dogs must remain leashed and cleaned up after. Dogs should not be in any fenced areas, including ball fields. Both departments are getting multiple complaints about people not cleaning up after their dogs. Please keep our parks clean so they can be used by all during this time for passive recreation.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. LeBeau, for uh, for mentioning that. Mr. Holland, um, I, I, I numbered, item number ten, we, well, just hold on, um, go to number nine. I want to ask you about um, item ten, um, about Nelson Pond, but. Um, board members, the next item um, on the agenda. Um, is to review and act on the reappointment of Laurie Gardette. Um, as a treasurer collector for a three-year term to expire on March second, uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, any, any comments? Or would anybody like to make a motion?
I can make a motion to um, reappoint Laurie Gardette as treasurer collector for a three-year term to expire on March second, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Um, again, a roll call vote. Ms. Casavia?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mrs. Apollo, aye. Okay, um, thank you. Um, item. Item ten is uh, oh, did I forget you? Sorry.
Thanks.
Thanks, sorry, getting out of myself. Um, item ten is to review and vote, um, the intention to alter the layout of Point Road and a portion of Nelson Point Road pursuant to MGL, chapter eighty-two, section twenty-two. Um, Mr. Holland, this is work that was already approved by the planning board and has been completed. And, and now is ready for acceptance. Is that what this is about?
That is correct.
So the letter, um, the letter from the planning board, um, I believe said. If the planning board voted and recommends the town proceed. So is that in effect asking us to put this on the um, town meeting warrant um, for acceptance?
That is correct.
Okay, um, Mr. Mizikah, did we already put, is that in the draft already?
Yes, I believe it is in the initial draft warrant.
Okay, I just couldn't remember. So I'm going back to Mr. Holland. This is, this is ready to go then?
Yeah, there's a few minor punch list items that they're gonna be doing in the spring. But we, uh, both engineer, engineering and uh, the inspections have been done. The plan, the as-built plans, the road acceptance plans have been submitted and have been revised and are ready for uh, are, are complete. There's just a few minor uh, touch-up things that need to get done, which we typically have done in the spring. Um, that with the contract and the contractor is aware of the punch list items. Uh, and just for clarity, so the, the subdivision itself is actually just Point Road. But because Point Road is off of Nelson Point Road, we require that Nelson, part of Nelson Point Road up to Point Road be also accepted. So that we don't have a public street going to a private street back to a public street. So. Developer is re- that was required to upgrade Nelson, or no, that part of Nelson Point Road and to have that portion also accepted.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anybody else have any questions or comments on that? Okay, um, then we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Um, item eleven is to review and act to allow MAG RE Holdings. Uh, shoes reality to present an appeal to the zoning board of appeals for zoning relief. Um, prior to uh, applying for new class one license. Um, you know, uh, board members, we typically ask um, the ZBA to defer to the board. And let the board hold its hearing on um, any car licenses. Um, this is a little bit of a unique situation where um, there's a lot of issues that need to be dealt with um, by the ZBA and um, uh, McGovern BMW is looking to move really across the street from the west side of Chestnut Street, um, to the east side into that uh, I can't think of the name of the company that was there, but the large building that's been vacant for several years. Um, and because of the intricacies of what's involved um, in the permitting, um, the applicant asks that we allow, we allow him to go to the ZBA first. Um, we, this is, our, we actually don't have a formal policy on this. Um, it's been a custom that we established about ten or twelve years ago. Um, and at, at least in my opinion, I don't see this as a um, a big issue because they're moving about five hundred feet. And not even five hundred feet. And they still will have to come back to have a license voted on um, at some point. So um, we're just letting, letting, we would, if we, if we agree. We're just allowing to let them do the process out of the cycle that we normally would have. So I'd open it up the questions for members of the board. Okay, um, so um, with the lack of questions, I'm assuming the board's okay with this. And if that's the case, could I, could I have a motion um, um, to vote to that effect to allow the applicant to go to the zoning board of appeals before, um, they come before the board of selectmen?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Um, Ms. Casavian?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samya?
Aye.
Mrs. Apollo, aye. Okay, we're all set on that. Um, item twelve is to review and act on the twenty twenty water restrictions in accordance with uh, current water management act permit requirements and pursuant to article eighteen of the town bylaws. Um, this is a um, a reoccurring um, uh, restriction that we put on. Um, it would typically goes from May first to September thirtieth. Um, even numbered houses can do outdoor watering um, on Wednesday and Saturday, or numbered uh, houses Thursday and Sunday. And no Monday, Tuesday and Friday. And there were certain restrictions in the, in the broader description, but essentially it's no outside watering except on those days. Um, and I believe uh, new lawns, et cetera, are allowed to be watered before nine AM and after five. So. Um, again, traditional article, any comments, questions? Um, Mr. Mizikah, you, you have a comment?
Um, not on this item, but uh, requesting the board go back to item ten and take a vote if you're prepared to do so this evening.
Oh, okay, let us finish this. We'll go back. I'm sorry. Um, okay, so um, any questions on the water restrictions? Okay, if there's none, could I have a motion to adopt the uh, the restrictions um, effective May first?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Casavian?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane? Mr. Kane?
I think we may have lost Mr. Kane momentarily, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Samya?
Aye.
Mrs. Apollo, aye. Okay, um, so um, we're all set on that. Um, let's go back to number ten. Could I have a motion to um, vote to um, accept the alter, Mr. Mizikah, just correct me if I'm wrong. We're voting to accept the al- an alteration in the layout of Point Road and a portion of Nelson Point Road?
That is correct.
Okay, so could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Mr. LeBeau?
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Something good on TV, John?
Just doing the work of the board, Mr. Chairman. Clark's work is never done.
Uh, Mr. Kane? Uh, I think we lost him. Uh, Mr. Samya?
Aye.
Mrs. Apollo, aye. Okay, um, item thirteen is a budget discussion that, um, I think we talked about it at the beginning of the meeting is. Um, it's not, we're not ready yet to get into um, a more detailed discussion of the budget. Um, but probably in the next, maybe by the next meeting, we'll probably have something more definitive to talk about. Um, item fourteen is to re- review and act on appointing one associate member to the zoning board of appeals for a one-year term to expire on the thirty-first. Um, my understanding is that um, several members have not had a chance to uh, talk to um, at least some of the applicants, um, because um, the things have just gotten a little hectic, um, as a result of um, the uh, COVID um, virus crisis. So I would ask that we um, delay this until our April twenty-eighth meeting, if that's okay. And anybody, um, I mean, if everybody's okay, we'll just do it. We don't need a vote.
Works for me.
Okay, yes. All right, so um, we'll do that. Mr. Kane, are you back?
Yes, Mr. DePaulo, I apologize for that.
Well, that's okay. Um, okay, um, uh, the only other two items I've seen on the agenda is an email dated April seventh from Brian Kane. Um, the acting executive director of the MBTA Advisory Board. Um, regarding the FY twenty twenty-one uh, budget report, um, so noted. And item sixteen is an email dated April eighth, twenty twenty from State Rep. Hannah Kane, um, regarding an update on the state budget outlook. Um, that's still kind of up in the air, but um, uh, I think the gist of the letter is, the consensus is, um, things are not gonna look as rosy as they were this year. Um, and there'll be more information to come. So um, does anybody else have any questions or comments on that? Are anything to come before the board in open session?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Kane?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, I made a motion regarding scheduling our annual uh, election. Later in the year and folks were gonna talk about it. And I thought we were going to deal with it this evening. And it doesn't appear to be on the agenda from my read. And if um, if, if that's fine, that's fine by me. I was just wondering what your plan would be for uh, for dealing with it.
Okay, um, my understanding was um, um, we weren't gonna move ahead on that, um, uh, primarily because, I mean, we could have the discussion, I, I'll put it on for the twenty-eighth, but um, a home rule petition requires a um, a vote of town meeting. So we would actually have to hold a town meeting to make that request. Um, and we don't even know when we're gonna have the annual town meeting. So it doesn't seem like it's feasible to do that. Um, so I, I thought, um, I thought that's, um, I thought that meant we weren't gonna move ahead. Maybe I misunderstood. Um, but that was information that I found out after the meeting, but um, if you want to talk about it, we'll put it on twenty-eight.
Well, I, I do think it's worth talking about, but if people have arrived at a conclusion, then there's no sense in wasting any time.
Um, okay, um, I, I, I guess, what's the sense of the board? Um, you want to pursue this further? Uh, I'm, you know, we're not, it, this isn't a, a, I mean, we could just give our opinions on it. Does anybody want to um, give an opinion at this point, or do you want to put it on the next agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Anyone? Um, Mr. LeBeau?
Mr. Chairman, as it's not on our agenda, I don't think it's appropriate that we discuss it at any great length this evening. Um, we're gonna have to make a decision. Um, we're gonna have to make a decision, uh, and I, and I, you know, I understand that if we need to go, um. The home rule route, we're gonna have to go to town meeting, but, uh, maybe we should talk about. And I'm, I'm saying maybe, maybe we should talk about what we're all seeing as a potential, uh, pathway to an election, or a potential, you know, month for an election. Um, and try to think about all the things we need to think about. Um, and to see if we can, uh, we're outside of, of the legal requirements, just think to ourselves, when do we think was, would be an appropriate time? With all we're hearing about the virus, about the different, uh, uh, you know, the different types of, uh. The, all the different letters of the alphabet I'm seeing, are we gonna have a W, or a U, or an L, as the, as the disease progresses? So, I, I, I think some conversation may be, uh, appropriate.
Okay, um, so, not necessarily tonight, but at the next meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't think we should talk about it tonight, it's not on the agenda.
Uh, okay, my, my, my point was, to Mr. Kane's, if nobody wants to do it. Um, personally don't want to do it, then there's not much point, but if you want to wait till twenty-eighth, we can wait till twenty-eighth.
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry, Mr. LeBeau.
No, no, please.
Um, I was under the impression after our meeting last week that we were going to be having a discussion on April twenty-eighth regarding. Setting a new date for the election potentially, so it might make sense just to talk about everything all at once in the. At the, at April twenty-eighth's meeting, when it's on the agenda.
Okay, that makes sense, um, all right, then why don't we do that, we'll hold it for the twenty-eighth, um. And we'll have that as part of the discussion about, um, where we think we're gonna be heading with the election, um. Okay, all right, we'll do that, um, Val, can you put that on the agenda, please? I know she's there somewhere, but I'll make sure she gets it on, okay, is there anything else this evening? Okay, they're being on, um, could I have a motion to adjourn, then?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Casavant?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
And Mr. DePaulo, aye, okay, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all.
Thank you.